Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Tuesday, January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Bran Sutter. Council Deputy Mayor Moss. And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Well, thank you very much. Now, if you'd all please rise and join me in a brief moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving this great country overseas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the world, with brotherly and honest love.
Well, thank you very much for attending tonight. It's great to see all of you here. We have a fantastic agenda this evening, started with our proclamation and presentation portion of tonight's agenda. The first is the two thousand twenty-three Larry Saunders Service Award presentation. And this is by the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund, and I believe we have Mr. Bob Warfield here on behalf of the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund, who will present the Larry Saunders Service Award. Mr. Warfield.
Good evening. Mayor Whelan, City Council members. My brief annual non sequitur this evening is closer to home than out in the rings of Saturn. I'm pleased to report that, in spite of us, the earth is behaving normally. And since the winter solstice, we've gained thirty minutes of daylight and reached exactly nine hours today. And also, with the police presence duly noted, I wanted known that I don't have any classified documents.
That's good.
Also, I don't have any in my cabana, and I don't have any in my Corvette. But my cabana is missing, and so is my Corvette.
Yeah.
It's a pleasure to be here. I am duly honored to represent the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund in partnership with the city of Lakewood. Pleased to announce that the twenty... This gets confusing because we gin up the award in one year and presented in another. So this is actually the two thousand twenty-two award, the Larry Saunders Service Award. In recognition of one of the finest guys we've ever known. Larry Saunders, our once-chief of police, great army officer, and a pal for many in this room. Tonight, the award goes to the McFadden Brothers. Jonathan and Brian McFadden distinguished themselves through more than twenty years of service critical to sustaining the operation of the Oakbrook Swim and Tennis Club. Jonathan and Brian McFadden have been a driving force behind the successful operation of the Oakbrook Swim and Tennis Club for more than twenty years. And now, in their mid-thirties, they began lessons at the age of five and seven, became junior lifeguards by age fifteen, and developed an interest in management of swimming pools. At age fourteen and sixteen, they took a course in pool maintenance and converted the pool's pumping system from tablet to liquid chlorine. They probably could get a job with the Liquid Water District, I'm not sure. In any case, it saved the club thousands of dollars. They taught themselves electrical welding, plumbing, carpentry, and other skills necessary to keep the pool open and managing functioning. In two thousand six, they assumed management of the pool and its operations. And as the operations increased, their supervision, excuse me, provided affordable summer recreation, physical fitness programs, life skills, swimming lessons, lifeguarding and CPR training, a safe community gathering place, and summer jobs for youth. The brothers' efforts over the years have afforded thousands of children the enjoyment of swimming and the benefit of lifesaving lessons in the water. In addition to providing hundreds of families with a great recreational opportunity. Growing up with a love of swimming and burning desire to create a pool for kids, Jonathan Breyer and Brian have given tirelessly their time and their money. When the pool struggled financially, they contributed to keep it open. They built and assembled special parts for aging heaters and pumps, replacing the entire system at their own expense. They revised maintenance manuals, rewrote bylaws for the organization, and worked tirelessly over the years. Jonathan and Brian, are you here? Wonderful. Would you come up, please? This photograph on the screen shows, I guess, life lessons or in-service lessons? In what, twenty nineteen, summer twenty nineteen? Wonderful. Well, our thanks to you. I want to also mention thanks to Patty Bell, Lakewood City Council, to Todd Wolf of Robie's Lakewood Camera and Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, and to Bob Lawrence, who is with the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund for assisting in the selection of this evening's winners. And also, with note, with the passing of the plaque to the McFadden Brothers, it's accompanied with a thousand-dollar grant, which I got there. We'll go to the Oakbrook Swim and Tennis Club. I have just two questions for Jonathan and Brian. I thought the nomination was actually written by their mother, but it turns out it was Barbara Harrison, who did a lovely job, and thank you to her. We only have an opportunity to meet. She's presently out of town and couldn't make it tonight. But my two questions. One is whether or not, in fact, it was written by your mother, and two, do you play tennis?
It was not written by my mother.
Oh, okay. Okay, they do play tennis. That's wonderful. Well, without further ado, we're honored to have Sally Saunders, Mrs. Laurie Saunders, present with Mayor Whelan to present a plaque to the McFadden Brothers. And congratulations. And I hope that the pool continues for many years to come. And I know that the Oakbrook community and others surrounding it are grateful for the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Well, on behalf of the Lakewood City Council, our thanks goes to you, Mr. Warfield, as well as the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund for continuing the good work and recognizing fine progress in all things Lakewood, and especially tonight for the McFadden Brothers for the work at Oakbrook Swim and Tennis Club. I can say with some gratefulness that my family, when my kids were young, attended Oakbrook, the Swim and Tennis Club, and learned to swim there and had a great time. And I've even played a little tennis, not very good tennis, but I played some tennis on those courts out there. So thank you for your work. Come on up and grab the plaque. We'll get a few photographs. Okay, and we'll go out and we'll get the council. Yeah, we'll get the council up front. I'm going to give you guys a chance to say a few words first, and then we'll get up front and we'll... Well, that's okay.
Thank you.
That was it. Thank you. A few words. All right, come on up.
I would just like to note that when you come into reception at City Hall, off to the left, you will see this plaque with the McFadden Brothers added.
Nice, Bob. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. Next, we're going to recognize the Clover Park School District, the Daffodil Princesses. And I am pleased to call on Adriana Bonn, Vivian Lawrence Hernandez, and Melody Molina Vasquez to receive certificates as daffodil princesses for, I think it's two thousand twenty-three, correct? Ladies, welcome. Fantastic to have you here tonight. I appreciated very much the opportunity, as did Councilmember Bell, I believe, to participate in the interview process. For all of you, I participated in your interview process, and every single student that participated was a fantastic example of servant leadership on display. You guys did a great job. So we're very proud of you, and we're going to provide these certificates here. So Adriana, congratulations. We'll get a photograph there, and we'll get counsel coming up. Melody Vasquez, congratulations. And Vivian Lawrence Hernandez, there you are. Thank you. You're welcome to say a couple of words if you'd like collaboratively, or we'll just go and take a big picture, whatever you prefer. Want to tell us a little bit about the program, what you do from here on out? What's next? Go ahead.
Hey, hello. I'm Princess Melody from Harrison Preparatory School. And all three of us are really grateful for heaven's opportunity to meet all of you and really grateful to be part of the daffodilian process. And yeah. We would love if you guys would come support us on first February fifth, where we get crowned as official daffodil princess, and on April first, where we have our annual daffodil parade.
Fantastic. Well, thank you guys very much. Next, we have a proclamation declaring January as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And for this, I'd call on, I believe, Christina Lee, Deputy Director, Rebuilding Hope, Sexual Assault Center for Pierce County, and she will receive the proclamation. She'll be joined by Nadia Van Alter, Assistant Director of the Crystal Judson Family Justice Center, and Jasmine Conway, Prevention Specialist with Washington Trafficking Prevention. Well, welcome. We're pleased to have you here tonight on behalf of the Lakewood City Council to recognize the fine work in a very significant and important endeavor. Whereas human trafficking endangers the lives of millions of people around the world, and it is a crime that knows no borders. And whereas trafficking networks operate both domestically and transnationally, and although abuses disproportionately affect women and girls, the victims of this ongoing global tragedy are men, women, and children of all ages. And whereas National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month was established in January two thousand and ten, proclaiming the right of equality and freedom inherent to all people, advocating for legislation that protects survivors and punishes offenders, educating leaders and encouraging public awareness and action against various forms of human trafficking. And whereas all communities must seek to prevent human trafficking by promoting a safe, healthy, and supportive environment for both youth and vulnerable populations alike. And whereas law enforcement, federal and state agencies, nonprofit organizations, social service providers and others, such as Rebuilding Hope, are committed to working together to end human trafficking in Pierce County through collaboration and public education campaigns. And whereas the city of Lakewood joins in this commitment to be a partner to end this modern-day slavery and exploitation. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims the month of January two thousand and twenty-three as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month here in the city of Lakewood, and we invite all residents to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities aimed at ending and preventing all forms of human trafficking. Proclaim the seventeenth day of January two thousand and twenty-three, Jason Whelan, Mayor. And on behalf of the council, I'd ask if you'd like to come on up and receive the proclamation, and if you have a few words, we'll get a photograph.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Good to see you. Thank you.
On behalf of Rebuilding Hope and Pierce County's Commercial Sexual Exploitation Collaborative, which includes Crystal Judson Family Justice Center, Washington Trafficking Prevention, and Our Sister's House, who is not represented today, we just want to appreciate, say thank you for continuing to support our agencies and our community and recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month.
I'm with the Crystal Judson Family Justice Center, and just to echo Christina's words, we really appreciate you guys acknowledging this and supporting the work that all of our teams do in supporting survivors in our community. Thank you.
I am with Washington Trafficking Prevention, and I would just like to say peace and gratitude. Thank you.
Want to take a photograph? All right, come on up. Should be the obligatory photograph. Well, thank you very much for that. And next, we turn to our police commissioning and commendation ceremony. And I'd like to call on our Chief Mike Zarro of the Lakewood Police Department, who will conduct the oath of office for Patrick Labers, Joseph Walker, Kayla Dract, and Jacob Brewer. That will be followed by seven police chief commendation awards. Chief Zarro.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan. If I could have Judge Mansfield come up to the microphone and also have officers Patrick Labers, Joseph Walker, Kayla Dract, and Jacob Brewer, please come down front.
First of all, I'd like to thank Chief Zarro for asking me here to swear you in. It is a fine thing to serve your community. And since I've been judge at Lakewood, I have noticed that Lakewood police officers serve at the highest level in care and service and commitment to their community. So congratulations on achieving this accomplishment. Now, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and of the state of Washington, that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington, and the laws of the city of Lakewood, and will, to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability, truthfully, faithfully, diligently, and impartially perform the duties of the office of State Your Position in and for the city of Lakewood and Pierce County, Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law. Congratulations.
Mayor Whelan, if I could have yourself and the council come down for a picture with our new officers.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan, and council members. And thank you, Judge Mansfield, for coming to swear in our new officers. Next up, we have a group of award recipients from the department. I know I try and send you all notices and information about all the good work our department's doing. And these are some that are highlighted and are nominated by their peers for these awards. Those are typically how they get up to this level. What I do like to point out is this is great work, but these officers are the rule, not the exception. These are just officers that exemplify some of the best that we have and some of the best work that we've done. So with that, I'd like to start with our awards. And if I could, first have Officer Julia Wubenga and Officer Jared Pingel, please come forward. Thank you both. If I could have you up front here. On August twenty-second, officers Wubenga and Pingel attempted to stop two cars on South Tacoma Way at Silicon Boulevard. The cars pulled into the jackham locks and went into the drive-through in an attempt to evade them, fool them, whatever the case may have been. They were able to get behind the cars and eventually get them stopped. One of the drivers was compliant, the other one was not. As they investigated further, Officer Pingel saw what was an extended magazine for a pistol in the center console of the car. Rather than panic, they both backed up, called for more officers, and waited for other officers to arrive. Once more officers did arrive, the driver was removed from the vehicle and detained. From outside the vehicle, the officers could see a pistol with an extended magazine under the driver's seat. It turned out that the driver had been recently released from prison and had multiple convictions for unlawful possession of a firearm. The driver was arrested, and the vehicle was sealed for a search warrant and towed to our station. Later in that, or probably later that day, or the next day, Officer Wubenga and Pingel applied for or granted a search warrant for the car. What they found was a stolen pistol with a thirty-one-round magazine, fully loaded, and another extended magazine, three hundred and sixty-six grams of powder cocaine, fifty fentanyl pills, fifty ecstasy pills, and other packaging materials that were clearly used to distribute this poison into our communities. This is, you know, if you, we had an award titled Outstanding Police Work, this would be it. This is, you know, just incredible proactive police work by two of our officers. Officer Wubenga, at the time, I believe, was actually on training. And I have to tell you, when I first started in this profession, for a street-level patrol officer to write a search warrant was a daunting task. They were intimidating. You just didn't do it. To see somebody that is new, in training even, and willing to take that on is impressive. And the result gets two guns, or a stolen gun, and, you know, multiple pills and cocaine off the streets, and definitely work that's worth recognition. So for Officer Wubenga and Officer Pingel's work, they're receiving the police chief's commendation.
And stick around, because we're going to get one big photograph.
Yes, I meant stick around at the end, or until the end.
Yeah, until the end. Yeah.
Okay, if I could have Officer Josh Rep, please come up. There you go. Again, this is an award that highlights just some outstanding police work. In December of, actually, this one goes back a ways to two thousand and twenty-one. A lot of our awards were put off just for a variety of reasons. Officer Rep learned of an incident in Pierce County where a silver-colored PT Cruiser was taken in an armed robbery at the Walmart in Spanaway earlier in the day. And he was also aware of another armed robbery of a citizen, possibly with the same suspects. Later in his shift, Officer Rep spotted the PT Cruiser and was able to coordinate other officers to come in and safely get the car stopped and detain two people that were inside. He went to the extra length to review security footage from the robbery and was able to positively identify the people he had as those that were involved in the robbery of both the car and was able to positively identify the people he had as those that were involved in the robbery of both the car and the citizen. In addition to recovering the stolen car and identifying the suspects, he was able to get back some of the stolen property from the citizen who was the victim of the robbery. So, I mean, all of that from paying attention to the information that he's given, and then also what's around him, and just looking for the people that are out hurting other people. So Officer Rep, for your efforts in this incident, you are being awarded the police chief's commendation. And Josh, don't go anywhere, and this time I mean, don't go anywhere. We do have another one. If I could have Officer Rep and Officer Nile Teklemarium, please come up. All right, this one was an incident that occurred in July of this last year. Officer Rep and Teklemarium, with some others, responded to an attempted suicide by gunshot. The male victim was still breathing, but unconscious when the officers arrived. And they'd found that he had shot himself in the head with a small pistol. Officer Rep and Teklemarium were among the first officers there. And although the chances of survival seemed slim, they both jumped in and rendered aid by placing gauze and wraps around the wounds. Once Wes Pierce arrived, the only thing they had to do was place him on a gurney and take him to a hospital. Because of their efforts, that patient survived for several more hours and was able to get to an advanced level of treatment. Unfortunately, he did succumb from his injuries later, many hours later. But had it not been for the life-saving efforts of Officers Teklemarium and Rep, he wouldn't have been given that fighting chance. So for your efforts in taking care of this person and just doing what you knew had to be done, you're both receiving a life-saving award. Okay, next, we have another life-saving award. If I could have officers Josh Beecham, Josh Northcutt, Quinn Rossen, and Officer Nile Teklemarium, please come up. This was another great example of life-saving efforts by our officers. They responded to a shooting in which the victim had sustained multiple gunshot wounds to their upper thigh. Officers jumped in and they quickly applied direct pressure and secured tourniquets to prevent further blood loss. Emergency room and hospital staff all credited the quick and proper application of the tourniquets as the only reason that the victim survived. They stated that without the immediate intervention by the responding officers, the victim would have likely bled to death in moments. The officer's immediate recognition of the victim's critical injuries and immediate application of emergency medical aid saved this victim's life. So undoubtedly, your efforts here saved this person's life, and you're all well-deserving of the life-saving award. If I could, please have Officer Kyle Zimmerman come forward. All right, Officer Zimmerman was working on May 30th, 2022, when he responded to a stabbing at a local apartment complex. Officer Zimmerman contacted the victim, who had already lost a large amount of blood, and other witnesses were applying makeshift bandages directly on the wound. Officer Zimmerman jumped in quickly, applied his tourniquet to the left arm that had a deep laceration, causing an arterial bleed in the left wrist. He also ensured that the others unseen helped apply pressure on the lacerations. He used a fellow officer's tourniquet on the right arm that was also injured, but less severely. Per the victim, who had lost a significant amount of blood, said he was about to pass out. And as he was only seeing in black and white, unable to process what was happening, he said something to the effect of that when he saw the ballistic vest of the police officer, he knew there was hope for him. There was hope indeed in the form of Officer Zimmerman. And the victim in this case survived, and later the RNU who treated that victim fully credited the application of the tourniquets by Officer Zimmerman for saving this person's life. So Kyle, for that, you're receiving the life-saving award. Okay, next, if I could have Officer John Babcock, Officer Matt Lightgib, and Officer Daniel Pyon, please come up. This recognition goes back to an incident that occurred in January of last year. In the late night hours, Officer Pyon tried to stop a suspected DUI truck, or driver, in a large pickup truck that also had switched plates, commonly indicative of a stolen vehicle. The suspect immediately fled and drove the wrong way onto I-5 and into oncoming traffic. Daniel, not wanting to make things worse, but still keep an eye on the suspect, went to the correct side of the freeway and tried to keep an eye on him. The suspect continued to flee until he got off the freeway at Bridgeport, where officers Lightgib and Babcock were waiting. The suspect got off the freeway and then tried to get back on again, going in the wrong direction. Recognizing that this presented a significant safety risk to the public on the freeway, Officer Babcock quickly drove his car into the truck and prevented it from getting on the freeway the wrong way. That didn't stop the truck, though. It continued going. And later Officer Lightgib, also recognizing the danger that that truck presented, attempted the same thing. The truck, being of a bigger size, was able to evade Officer Lightgib as well. Ultimately, the truck was found later in that night, abandoned. Turned out that it was stolen and that there was a stolen gun inside the car. Luckily, nobody was hit. I can't underscore enough how dangerous a situation like that is. And for officers to directly put themselves in harm's way to protect the public is an incredible gesture of service and bravery. For all of your efforts in this incident, you're all being presented the Medal of Meritorious Service. And there was a printing error, so John will get his later. And then finally, if I could have Sergeant Jason Catlett, Officer Cody White, Officer Daniel Pyon, Officer Josh Beecham, and Officer Leisha Cockle, please come forward. This is from an incident that occurred last January. Officers responded to apartments in our Woodbrook neighborhood for reports of shots being fired. The suspect, who had a vantage point from his balcony, was indiscriminately shooting into the air and into the parking lot with a semi-automatic AR-15. As Sergeant Catlett and the officers arrived, they parked down the street, blocking the road so no citizens would be put in harm's way, and ran towards the gunfire. Once within sight of the suspect, he fired at our officers as they were trying to take up positions of safety. Shortly after, while the suspect was still shooting, Sergeant Catlett was able to stop this threat. Tragically, this incident involved the loss of life, but if it were not for the leadership of Sergeant Catlett and the bravery and courage of our officers, many innocent people may have been injured or killed. For their efforts in rushing to the sound of gunfire, which for some is a cliche, for them is a reality, they're all being presented the Medal of Valor.
Wow, fantastic.
Mayor Whalen, if it's okay, that's the end of our awards. If we could have all the awards recipients come up and do a picture with the council?
Absolutely. And before we all come down together, I just want to say a few words. Bring all the uniformed officers and the plainclothes folks in. Chief, I want to thank you tonight for this program. It's a reminder to all of us here in the community of the good that is done every day. Public safety is top of mind, as we all know, for many in the community. And for many, the first contact residents of Lakewood have is not with a council member, or a city manager, or police chief, but it's with all of you. You are the face of Lakewood for most of our residents on a day-to-day basis. Your professionalism, while expected, is certainly appreciated, and we thank you, especially those of you who are recent hires to the city of Lakewood. We thank you for choosing to serve here in Lakewood. I've experienced your professionalism personally on my own during the ride-alongs, and those of you I've ridden with, I've certainly enjoyed my time, and I expect to meet with more of you over the course of the next year or two. But tonight reflects the fine work of those awarded, but it also exemplifies the fine police work and professionalism of this entire department. Which, by the way, is growing. Not only growing in ranks, but growing in diversified backgrounds and experiences, which we understand as your council will continue to serve this community well. Thank you for your example. Thank you for your stories tonight. We appreciate you and your families and for being here. Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your indulgence with the ceremonies tonight. We now turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or certainly by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted here in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, BSchumacher@cityofLakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the clerk and the city council electronically, and the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance, which included a correction on a scribbler's error to some meeting minutes, which we very much appreciate. Thank you.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance of this evening's meeting from Casey Crook.
And I believe Ms. Manetti on a scribbler's error that we're correcting to the meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter related to city business under the public comment period. Please note that your comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments, for those of you attending virtually, are certainly welcome. You can join the Zoom meeting by dialing in on the phone number and entering the meeting ID number indicated on the screen. Please use the star nine feature to raise your hand to be called upon. So what I try to do each public comment period is alternate who I call on first, those virtually, those in attendance, and tonight, the lucky members who are on Zoom will be called on first, followed by those who are here in person and have signed in to speak or wish to address the council, even if they haven't signed in. So those who are appearing virtually, I see a few hands raised. And I believe Mr. James Dunlop is first.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I want to comment on the meeting on December the 5th, when you appointed a new hearing examiner. As I understand it, there were two candidates. One candidate was the existing hearing examiner, Phil Olbrecht. The other was Mark Schreidmeyer. Now, Phil Olbrecht, as I understand it, is a highly respected lawyer. He he's well-known in the industry. He's considered to be an expert on planning law and so forth, and I believe he's served Lakewood for 10 years. He has not, he has not come up with particularly controversial judgments, in the sense that he's upheld what the city was planning on doing. Nonetheless, he has given those appealing a fair hearing. And it's very interesting that you've decided not to reappoint Phil Olbrecht. Now, I don't fully understand the process, maybe later you can clarify this, but instead, you have appointed Mark Schreidmeyer. Now, I have to be careful what I say, but just doing a Google search would suggest that Mark Schreidmeyer generally seems to support the city, the planners, the developers. That seems to be, he has a reputation for doing that. In one case, there was reference to him denying people standing. I understand standing is a really controversial issue, but if you deny people standing, and I understand legal standing in America is really important, you, you know, you have no say, and it is complicated. But I'm worried about why the city chose Mark Schreidmeyer as opposed to staying with Phil Olbrecht. I, you know, last year, you were claiming to be environmentally sensitive. We had the Ad hoc Tree Committee. And then to go with, to go with Mark Schreidmeyer may suggest a certain amount of bad faith on your part, but that depends on what your motive was. And I think it's very important for the people of Lakewood to know why you made the choice that you made, and what the process was, and what your intention was. I think that's very important. So that's and what the process was and what your intention was. I think that's very important. So that's all I have to say. But I think I'll be saying more about this when I'm more sure of my facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dosari Farmacus.
Good evening. I'm Dosari Farmacus, and I am the Minister of Education of the Panther Party. And I'd just like to talk for a moment, you know, yesterday was obviously Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And y'all were happy to have your proclamations about that and honor his legacy. But you know, what happens, and this happens every year at this time, is that people talk about Martin Luther King and how great he was, and how much respect they have for him and his legacy, but then they ignore all the parts of his legacy that were inconvenient for them. You know, see, y'all want to talk about, you know, to celebrate that holiday one day, and then the next day you hold a ceremony for a bunch of pigs? It doesn't make sense. It shows that you're hypocrites. You're ignoring so much of his legacy, his radical anti-capitalism, his statements that he can't condemn violence, and one cannot morally condemn violence in the ghetto if you don't also condemn the violence of the United States military and the police and the system that they represent. You know, you talk about, you know, stopping human trafficking, which is important, yes. And you talk about, we need to end, you know, modern-day slavery and exploitation. That's what the American injustice system is. That's what the prison system is. The system that your police uphold and defend, that's what it is. That's what they send people to, is slavery and exploitation. Go read the 13th Amendment. You cannot force someone into servitude unless they are convicted of a crime. In other words, you go out, you convict people of a crime, and then you force them into slavery. Right? That's what all these people that you've just celebrated, that's what they do. And they murder people, right? How many murderers has Mike Wiley been complicit in letting off? How many, how many people has, or has he killed himself? How many has Mike Zarro been complicit in, you know, in the deaths of? Right? How many will these new tin men be complicit in the deaths of? But you stand here, and besides the deaths, again, how many will they send to slavery? See, it's all a game. Again, you pretend to be progressives, you know, when it comes that time of year to celebrate Martin Luther King Jr., but you don't care about what he actually stood for. You don't care about, you know, his stance on abolition, the idea that, you know, this justice can never happen, economic and racial justice can never happen under capitalism. Again, you support tin men who support your expansion of private property at the expense of the people and which the people have spoken out against over and over and over again. All power to the people.
That is the last individual who has their hand raised to address councillor in the public comment period virtually. I'll hold it open for a second. Madam Clerk, do you see any other hands raised?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. I will turn to those who have signed in to address council in person tonight. The first is Atto Equitas.
My name's Atto Equitas, and I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. I kind of wish that some of the tin men had stayed, but why would they want to stop and hear the people that they're supposed to represent? Funny, the judge that was right here, she read out the nice thing, hands up and said a lot about the country and the state and the city. I might be wrong, and I know you like facts, and I'm going to get you facts. I'm gonna get you facts, but I'm pretty sure that the one word she never said in that thing is "people." I'm pretty sure. I'll go check though, and I'm gonna get back to you. Why are we representing the country and the state and the city and not dedicating ourselves to the people? Why are we not saying that we are here to serve the people anymore? He was up here giving a couple commendations earlier, and the two young bloods in there. He was talking about search warrants, and he was like, sometimes when the young cats jump in, the search warrants are so daunting that they just don't do them. They don't do their jobs because it's difficult? Real?
Not what I heard, but go ahead.
All right. I'm gonna play it back tomorrow, because I know you like facts, but I'm pretty sure that's what he said.
Check with your Minister of Education. He might.
No, 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 no. I do my own research. I got you. Don't worry. I'm gonna get back at you, because we got a lot to talk about, remember? So, I appreciate you. The other thing was Sergeant Catlett. He got the Medal of Valor. In the last three years, he's killed two people that were experiencing mental health crisis. Where's the valor there? We're here to serve the people. You say that you guys are here to serve the people. They say that they're here to serve the people. There's a reason we say "all power to the people." Why are we the only ones that haven't seemed to forget that? I'm sorry you look bored. Don't worry. I'll wrap up soon. I only got a couple seconds left. Can we please just bring it back to the people? That's what we're here for, isn't it? All power to the people.
Next, Aviano X.
It's actually said Obunayo X. Funny, I gotta correct y'all every single time. I don't really have too much to say tonight, except for that I know I work out, I'll work all your boys in blue. Probably I'll work at chief too. Sure he can't run 18 hours a day and still keep a tight ship. I mean, obviously, he's got some murderers on the roster. I ain't got not one, so, you know. It's just we're there. I wanted to speak because, well, I wanted to address something in particular, but I guess I'll start with the fact that well, your chief, while giving out awards, did not shake not one hand or look the gentlemen in their eyes, or the ladies, or others, while handing them awards. Not one. In my line of work, you have to look them in the eyes, shake their hand, give them the respect that is due, especially with something like a Medal of Valor, which I really don't think that a murderer deserves. You know, I don't even know how to say the guy's name. Catholic? Catholic? I don't know. Something like.
Catholic? Catholic?
Catholic. Yep. That and I'm gonna circle back around to the mass murder of trees. Does y'all know that you killing endangered trees? Pretty sure y'all got it down by now. We talk about it every week. Still gonna stand up here and represent for those trees, because I am a tree hugger. I hug the hell out of a tree. With that, I still ain't seen no justice for Sayyouakim, who was slain by Mike Wiley. Y'all have already heard that a million times. I'm, in fact, wearing a nice purple hairband tonight in memory of the young brother. With that, justice for the Gary Oaks and justice for Sayyouakim. All power to the people.
That is the last individual who has signed in to speak to councillor in the public comment section here in the audience. As indicated previously, that doesn't preclude you. If you would like to address council, please queue up the podium, provide your name and residence of record, and you'll have your three minutes.
Ms. Manetti, Lakewood. I wanted to thank Ms. Schumacher for making the very thorough minutes of late, but I do have one thing to point out that you noticed already, but the minutes from the last city council meeting should be corrected in the public comment section. My public comment, also that of James Dunlop, to correct the spelling of the new hearing examiner's name. It's not Schmiber, I think, as is written in the minutes, but rather Mark Scheibmeier. His name must be spelled correctly, since the minutes are, after all, a matter of record and especially important in this case, considering Mr. Scheibmeier's problematic reputation. When interested parties search for any mention of him in the internet, they will not find anything if his name is spelled incorrectly. The city has also, misspellings of names also happen to have cost the city dearly of late. I request that the agenda not be approved as written, and that the spelling of the new hearing examiner be spelled correctly before it is approved.
I think I've noted that in the record. Thank you. Are there any other individuals who wish to address council? Yes, sir.
Hey, I didn't think I was gonna make it here in time. Hi, my name is Buncha Cardo, Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party, resident of Lakewood. Right now. You alluded to it, so I'm gonna say facts. I got you. I don't have to make up anything at all to say what I'm about to say. Facts. Lakewood's crime rate is 55 per 1,000 residents, which is one of the highest crime rates anywhere, depending, regardless of the size of the town. A person has a 1 in 18 chance of being a victim of a violent or property crime. That is astounding. 1 in 18. So if I stand 36 people in this room, two of them are probably gonna get mugged, robbed, shot, something, or something of theirs might get stolen. And yet, with that being the case, we're up here celebrating. Okay, this is very simple, actually. When you look at it from the aspect of the people who are supposed to be being protected, this looks like a circus to them. You know why? Because they don't feel safe. But if you look at the crime map of the city, it's kind of evident where the crime is the worst and why. See, the problem isn't the people committing the crime, although that is a symptom of the problem. The real problem is a lack of resources, a lack of funding, all of those good things. Now, I personally have watched the city since I moved here almost seven years ago. I've seen a steady decline in so many things. Now, there are certain things that you pay a great deal of attention to, and you give them all the resources necessary to make them go. There are great parks in Lakewood. I will give you that. I love going to the park. I do. I'm not a tree hugger like my brothers, or like my sister Christina. I'm not a tree hugger, although I do believe that the Gary Oaks should be protected, just because protecting anything that is native to any area is important. But I will say this, despite the fact that I'm not a tree hugger. I love going to the park, but it breaks my heart when I go to the park and I see little kids that I know one day are gonna grow up and become victims of this rapidly growing crime rate. It's crazy. It's crazy. And I have to walk outside my house and watch cop cars ride up and down my street with no effect. None. You know what the best thing was that happened to my block? I moved there. That's the best thing that happened to it, because there have been several situations where the police have been called. Nobody showed up for over an hour, but I took care of it. Because that's why we're here. "All power to the people" is not a catchphrase. It's not rhetoric. That's the way it's supposed to work. You get elected by the people. They give you power so that you can turn and power them back. I said I wasn't gonna bring my man up, but all I'll say is justice for Sayyouakim. All power to the people.
That's the last individual that I'm aware of tonight, who is here to address councillor in the public comment period. Are there any other individuals who wish to address councillor in the public comment period? Okay, if not, before I close it, I just want to address the comments on the hearing examiner, since there's an interest in making sure you have the facts. The city council does not hire or appoint the hearing examiner. The city manager is empowered to hire the hearing examiner. The council confirms the appointment of the city manager. We have no direct contact with hearing examiner. We don't know necessarily who the person is. And so I just want to make that clear. So, in the absence of any other individuals addressing the council during the public comment period, I'll declare it closed. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January 3rd, 2023. B, motion number 2023-07, approving the 2023 Citizens Advisory Board's committees and commission work plans. C, motion number 2023-08, authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the Lakewood Police Independent Guild from January 1, 2023 through December 31st, 2025. D, motion number 2023-09, approving local match funding in the amount of $77,670 for the Office of Defense Community Cooperation Grant for the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership. E, motion number 2023-10, reappointing Jason Whalen to serve on the Creek Pierce Transit Board of Commissioners through December 31st, 2025. F, motion number 2023-11, appointing Paul Bokey as member and Mike Branstadter as alternate member to the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Shape Executive Board. G, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, 1, Arts Commission Meeting Minutes of October 2nd, 2022; 2, Arts Commission Meeting Minutes of November 7th, 2022; 3, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of December 1st, 2022; and 4, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of December 7th, 2022.
And before I move to adopt or ask if there's any item which a councillor wishes to remove from the consent agenda before adoption, Madam Clerk, you did get the Scrivener's error that was commented on before we adopt the meeting minutes.
Correct. That will be changed in the final meeting minutes.
Very good. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Then moved by Deputy Mayor Moss and seconded by Councilmember Bell that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda resolutions. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2023-01, establishing the work plan and public participation program for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Development Regulations and Critical Areas Ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. For this, I will call on our long-range and strategic planning manager Tiffany Spear, joining us virtually, who will give an overview on this particular item.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can. Thank you.
Apologies. For some reason, I'm not able to apparently transmit my image, but I am here. Thank you. And I will share my screen. Our discussion regarding this resolution began last week, I believe, on the 9th. And in front of you now on the screen should be the information regarding this resolution, starting on page 92 of your packet this evening. But this is the resolution that would formalize through your action the work plan and the public participation program for the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review. And it was discussed last week to explain that what this is doing is setting the city up to be able to answer any questions that there may be in the future regarding how this process will be conducted between now and the end of this process at the end of 2024. But to summarize what was discussed last week, this is showing the various pieces of the comprehensive plan, as well as the development regulations, including the critical areas ordinance that will be reviewed with public involvement, as well as other stakeholders and subject matter experts over the next 18 to 24 months. And then also the public participation program, which is going to hopefully engender some additional comments beyond what you would hear in a public hearing. We have a number of different options anticipated and set up for this process, reaching out to community-based organizations, reaching out to established partners of the city, everything from a charitable organization, to chambers of commerce, to landowners, to try to make sure that as we update. a charitable organization to chambers of commerce, to landowners, to try to make sure that as we update the comprehensive plan from front to back is required by this process, reviewing for any needed updates, that we do have plenty of public involvement. So I will stop there and ask if there's any questions. Otherwise, the resolution is also part of this packet and ready for your consideration this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Spear. Are there any questions, Ms. Spear, on the overview? Again, this is something we reviewed at some length during the study session. This represents really a work plan, including the public participation program for the twenty twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review, which is a requirement of state law. Any questions of Ms. Spear? If not, I'll entertain. Thank you, Ms. Spear. Appreciate your work. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one. It's been moved by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one. Is there any further discussion at this time? Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Having had a chance to look at the resolution and the work plan and the public participation plan that it uh, establishes or prescribes, uh, I have to say that I'm not planning to support the resolution. Uh, I really have some concerns as to whether this particular plan, both for the work plan and the public participation, really serves our community well. The intent of some of the state uh, guidance is, in 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 any comprehensive plan for a city such as ours, which is is designed to set up a framework, policy, and goals, and rules that will shape the development of the city for the next twenty years. I'm having trouble seeing how we're going to get there with this, and some of my concerns stem from the fact that although their GMA calls for early and continuous public participation in the development and amendment of a plan, the work plan calls for a consultant to draft all the elements of what we're going to do uh, during twenty twenty-three, particularly to draft the things that relate to critical ordinances and housing. And after they're drafted with minimum public input, then put the drafts out there for public comment, participation. But they're not going to be created, taking with significant public input to be able to go and do that. One element of the plan calls for a consultant to create a racial equity report. And there is a list on page ninety-six and ninety-seven of our packet of all the things to be evaluated to do that and the tasks that the consultant will undertake. And it does not indicate at all that this report will be be constructed using public input, only analysis by a consultant. And I think that that's, in this day and age, that's something that we as a city in the past have struggled, but we really need to reach out into the diversity of our community to really know what some of those disenfranchisements or things that were problem areas are. We're funding this work um, with a number of grants, and one of the grants had to do with the housing uh, area that we're receiving some money so that we can do some work to develop the housing. And when it was before us to accept the grant, the briefing that we were given said that while the the grant required us to look at what role middle housing could play in the city to be able to go and do that, but it wasn't going to mandate that we insert middle-income housing into our into our plan at any degree other than to the extent that it was going to be beneficial and fit to fit in with the long-term planning of the city. Yet today, we have a plan that says, as a starting point, we will start with converting a minimum of thirty percent of the single-family residential areas by changing the zoning to accommodate middle housing without pertaining particularly regard as to whether that's needed or not, just to do that. And and that's actually on page ninety-seven of our packet. And lastly, it does say that SEPA plays a role in looking at with the plan that we come up with. But it strongly implies that we're going to say, well, we've done all a lot of things, and whatever we do, that's going to be impactful for twenty years is really likely to have a determination of non-significance as far as the SEPA and not require an environmental impact review. I have a hard time seeing that as comprehensive of a review as this is going to be to include in areas such as climate change to making significant zoning changes in thirty percent or more of of a community is 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 going to result in a, should result in a determination of non-significance in that all previous SEPA reviews are just are just already relevant. And 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 my and my and my concern is that when we looked on the at the at the update process timelines, no period of timeline, that timeline does not include any window to do an environmental impact statement if a SEPA determination was that we needed to do one. And I guess that, lastly, I look at the outline for the timelines for the comprehensive plan update process in this work plan, and it frontloads the housing elements. Have the consultant draft the housing element, draft the development regulations uh, to be done by June of this year. And we are in an environment where the state legislature is in session and will be until all of that time. And there are already numerous bills of various character that could impact, depending upon what they do, the housing element. But this implies that we're going to assume that all those bills are gonna pass. Or at least it seems to me that way, because if we think we can write our plan in advance of the legislature taking final action on all those housing. So the plan seems backwards in what we're gonna do in twenty twenty-three and what we could do in twenty twenty-four, which would be, look at the Tillicum Plan, do the deal with the transportation element and other things. So the process is backwards. Um, and so for that reason, uh, I can't support it.
Very good. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, and thank you, Councilmember Branstadter, for bringing up those points. I I I am interested to know uh, at the bottom of page ninety-seven, where the thirty percent came from. And so Burke will also prepare a draft zoning code text to authorize middle housing types on at least thirty percent of lots currently zoned as single-family or low-density residential. So thirty percent is my first question. Where did that come from? Secondly, I think it's I think that's the council's call as to where those, I I I guess I would take those as suggestions as to you you know, how are the people in the neighborhoods gonna be informed that they're part of this thirty percent that's now? And will that even, from what we know, will that even make us in compliance with state law? There's three questions there.
Maybe Ms. Spear can attempt to address them, so we can have some clarity before we vote on the public participation program.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will attempt to respond to both Councilmember Bokey's questions, as well as some of the comments from Councilmember Branstadter. Uh, in terms of the thirty percent number, that was part of the middle housing uh, grant that was accepted by the city. Uh, I'll put it up on screen again for just reference to the language. And as Mr. Bokey said, this is a draft zoning code for the council to then review, the Planning Commission to review prior to that. And so the fact that there's a draft in front of council certainly does not predetermine its outcome. It's entirely up to the council to decide whether they want to accept that number or not. Um, in addition, the housing element that's talked about here uh, is not intended to be adopted this year. The intention is that the the housing element would be drafted and then incorporated into the full twenty-four periodic review process over the next eighteen months. So while this draft will be done and then in front of council to consider, that won't happen until into twenty twenty-four. And there will be approximately a year where the public will be informed about this. There will be opportunities throughout the twenty-four periodic review for public feedback. Uh, and so the thirty percent is not a thou shalt. It is a draft that will come to council for consideration. And the adoption of this housing element will not occur in twenty-three. It will be in twenty-four as part of the full review. The um, fact that the legislature already, this early in the session, is drafting a number and considering a number of bills that could significantly affect local government, city of Lakewood in particular's ability to autonomously plan for housing and residential build over time. That may all occur this year. Some of them, bills may die. Uh, but regardless, again, none of this is going to be adopted until twenty-four. So the council will be brought abreast during each of the status updates that are currently scheduled in front of you over the next year with where we're at with our drafts, but they are certainly subject to change if state law changes and that state law will affect the twenty-four periodic review requirement. So even though we have a draft that will be coming out in twenty-three, it will be subject to edit as needed based on state law changes this year and to next, and also through the public hearing process.
So the thirty percent number was in the grant that we accepted?
Yeah, it it is a, it is part of what the project asks for. It doesn't say you will adopt it. It's you will prepare it and consider it.
Okay, so this was, okay, so we accepted this grant to help us write this portion, the whole thing, of the plan.
Correct.
But along with that, there was this element that we had to identify at least thirty percent of the residential areas for this, what's now called missing middle.
Some of it's already occurred, if I could, Mr. Bokey, in our current zoning. Um, it's not as if all of the residential zones only allow single-family detached or mid-to-high-rise. There are middle housing things already allowed in certain zones.
ADUs cottage housing, right? We already do ADUs and cottage housing as part of the quote, missing middle in single-family residential zones.
Correct. Um, if I could, Mr. Mayor, there was one other comment regarding the DNS of SEPA versus an EIS. And um, on page ninety-eight at the bottom, it's talking about drafting either a determination of significance or a determination of non-significance, depending on what happened. So again, there's no assumption that this will be a DNS or a determination of non-significance. And in fact, uh, we are working right now with um, internal staff, as well as the consultants, to take a look at the environmental impact statement from two thousand, when the first complaint was adopted, as well as the one from the last major of the in twenty fifteen, to see where the supplemental EIS may need to focus for twenty twenty-four.
Very good. Any other comments or questions on that? Again, I I see this as a flexible process that will certainly allow council input, and that was what I understood to be the reason for the periodic updates over the next eighteen months, so we're kept abreast of it. And and the good thing, and I appreciate the comments, Mr. Branstadter and Mr. Bokey, the positive thing is you do have some legislative uh, changes, or at least proposals afoot this year, so we'll get a sense where the state is going. And we also have the two of you participating in shape, which will be helpful as we go forward with our own comprehensive plan update process. So my comments, reading this, uh, in addressing whether or not there's adequate public participation twofold. One, you can do everything you can uh, to lead a horse to water, but sometimes it's difficult to make a horse drink, and we have uh, bent over backwards in many endeavors to encourage public participation, and sometimes it is what it is. So they're either interested in the subject or they're not. But what we can, we can do, and what I think this public participation program does do is it provides uh, a myriad of opportunities for the public to participate. Uh, and I think the engagement that I see, at least the way I read this, I found it somewhat positive. Uh, they're going to, if you look at pages, uh, I believe it's a hundred and one and a hundred and two of the packet, they're going to conduct public and stakeholder engagement efforts. Uh, you know, they're going to incorporate input from city residents, businesses, and partners. They're going to um, facilitate uh, the communication through in-person workshops, tribal coordination interviews, uh, engagement interviews with local community-based organizations. Um, you know, I I think it looks somewhat comprehensive to me, but proof will be in the pudding, right? And that's why we have an opportunity over the next eighteen months to have some input and say, hey, look, if we're not getting enough input from areas which we know uh, are either significantly impacted by housing decisions of past, and we want to correct that course of action and course of direction for the future, we can certainly direct that, I assume. Is that correct, Ms. Ms. Spear? We can see how we're doing in terms of public participation, get the good feedback. That's why we're paying them. And if we don't believe it's thorough enough, we can certainly have them do more work.
Absolutely. There is um, always a give and take with consultant work, as well as with the internal staff um, leaders for this project, where we'll see where we are at at certain milestones and see if we need to turn this ship.
So any other comments, questions? I am of the glass half-full variety, as opposed to half-empty on this one. And I'm gonna support it. Mr. Branstadter.
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I see you're looking at the 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 public engagement opportunities that are outlined and as a glass nearly full. Um, and I um, and and I and I'm looking at it as a glass that's pretty empty, because it's all, it's it's it's, all these are things are things that we've already drunk before and didn't get us to where we really ought to be as a diverse community. So um, you know, and there isn't anything in here at all that talked about periodic reviews by this body of the, what's what's learned by public participation. You know, there's not a, there there's no feedback loop that comes to us until the spring of twenty twenty-four. Okay, um, and uh, but then it's gonna be too late to go back and redo things that we think are not well-informed by what the public wants. We're going to get it. This is a plan to get us a plan that the state will buy. And that the Puget Sound Regional Council will buy. And we're asking, what we're asking the consultant to do, get us something that'll meet all of those folks' requirements, so when we submit it, we won't get any we won't get any pushback from there. But it's not necessarily a process that gets us to the plan that our community deserves. Um, at least that's my, my, my view.
Understood. I'm not, I'm not sure. Uh, Mr. Boki.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to go along with it because we got this grant and I guess this is what they ask, but if, if we think that even if the legislature decides, hey, everybody, all these investors get to put up six plexes all over residential areas, all over the state of Washington as a, as a, as a uh and they think that residential areas and people who have worked hard to um save up to be able to buy a home are going to roll over and, and, and we think that they're going to roll over because the state legislature said so. We need to think again. When, when Burke comes out with, here, here's the lucky folks. And we'll see, let's look at it through the lens of equity and see what neighborhoods are impacted by this. And I'm telling you right now, um, we're going to have a problem. And um I just I don't want, there's a lot of things we need to update in our comp plan. Um, and I'm worried that the whole thing is going to become and all the energy is going to be about um us being the vanguard for the state legislature to carve up single-family residential areas. Um, mainly poorer areas, by the way, too, which is, I think, where the most, most of the impact will be because they're already owned by investors. So um we got a long ways to go on this. I'll vote for it tonight, but it's when Burke comes out with that, we have to announce to these neighborhoods, oh, your neighborhood's been chosen to be chopped up. Well, be ready.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? My only comment is this is, this is a, a plan to create a plan uh with input from us and certainly if the state legislature changes state law that requires cities to act, that's where we should be concerned. And that's why we have to engage with our twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth legislative representatives. If we don't want the parade of horribles to happen by way of mandated changes to single-family zoning, well, then we got to speak up. This process is ours, however, that will be consistent with state law. So if state law is where we're not excited about potential changes, then we need to make sure we're on top of that with our, our, uh, our representatives as well as our lobbying team. But with regard to where Lakewood as a fairly built-out community already is going with regard to housing, we have a build-up of lands report. We know where the available lands are. We have already planned for upwards of four thousand units in two sub-area plans that we obtained a lot of public participation in and a lot of uh good planning efforts towards. And that's Lakewood Station, Sub area district and the Central Business District. So that's where we're going to, and that's where we have planned to see the majority of our growth on this missing middle thing. We've already passed ADU opportunities for every residential zone. We've already authorized cottage housing. I don't see us chopping up a bunch of single-family zones unless the state legislature tells us we got to do it, because I don't see Lakewood doing it. So again, I look at this with a glass half-full and we have control, at least what we can control. So it's my comment. In the absence of any other discussion, we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one. Oh, do we already have it set on the table? Okay, sorry about that. I got so lost in the myopia of the discussion. In lack of any further discussion, any other fly specks in the pepper, I'll call for uh adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three zero one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Yay.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one has been adopted. We now turn to unfinished business, Mr. Coffield. Any?
There is none, Mayor.
What new business?
Um, there is none, Mayor.
Great. So then the floor is yours for reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'd like to turn it over to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, to give you an update on the applicants that you have received um as it relates to the uh council position opening.
Uh, Mayor, on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, the city began soliciting for candidates to fill the anticipated city council position six vacancy. The, the solicitation asked interested Lakewood residents to submit a one-page letter of interest summarizing their qualifications and a resume. The deadline to submit was five P M. On Friday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. On January thirteenth, eleven applications were electronically transmitted to the city council for consideration. On January fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city received a twelfth application that was transmitted to the city council today on January seventeenth. The city council has until March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three to appoint a candidate to fill the vacancy. Um, the policy question for the city council this evening is whether you would like to consider the applicant um whose uh submission was transmitted late, given the council's initial deadline of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Very good. I guess that's the initial item for discussion on a procedural matter. So we have the uh candidates who've submitted timely applications, and we have the one that came in, it looks like a couple of days late uh by Mr. Wolf. Any thoughts or comments, ladies and gentlemen, on that? At one point, we talked about having the process open to ensure that we had enough participation. Uh, while we did set a deadline, it, it was, as we discussed, somewhat flexible. So it's certainly in council's discretion if you want to accept this last applicant in the pool of applicants. Comments, Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, you know, I in that the application arrived within our system in the uh in a period of time, wait, wait, on, on a non-business day before the next business day following where it is. Um, you know, that, this, you know, this is not, this is not a public works contract where the minute and date is so important um as it is, I think, to give uh the opportunity for all those that have made the effort to, 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 to serve. And as we have found ourselves, uh, when you're trying to submit things through computers, uh, something can happen that could add a little bit of time to it. And, but we took, we, we took no actions regarding the group of packets that we had uh in hand at, at the end of business on the thirteenth to add one that came in on the fifteenth before we begin to do anything with any of them. I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Very good. Any other comments or questions or differences of opinion? I too am fine with including uh the final applicant in the packets. That would make, what, twelve?
Correct.
Twelve. Okay, very good. So um anything further, Ms. Schumacher, on that? Or did you want us to have some time to chat among ourselves about the whittling down process? Okay.
I, I would just add, Mayor, next week, we plan on bringing back, you know, based on whatever direction you give us this evening. You know, the candidates, you know, who you want to interview, it's all of them. If it's just some of them, and you can make that decision next week as well, as well as the questions that the council had um talked about, I think, at a couple of meetings ago. So we'll have all that. So your next, so again, so basically your next study session next Monday, you'll have an opportunity to kind of bring it all together. Um.
And we can decide, you know, whittle down our process and it may differ from the process.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because we've heard in prior council comments, I believe Mr. Anderson made a suggestion that we can chew on, you know, now or certainly next week at the study session, whether or not we each uh initially cast a vote of three, for any three, and then that would whittle down the field to a panel that we would then interview as opposed to interviewing all twelve. So that's something for discussion consideration. Mr. Branstadter.
Well, I, well, I heard council member Anderson's suggestion. Um, I um in thinking back to the past, uh, uh, found that it was uh felt fairer and was most informative by allowing all of the applicants to interview.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the list of folks that have submitted applications, about half of them are people who are known to me. And another half are people who I still have, I have to learn about. So I not particularly sure that I could go through a winnowing process um without some bias one way or the other around the people whom I know or have, have, have had interactions with. Um, and I'm much more comfortable, you know, going forward. We have already in our the number that we have is not so great that it will take more than a single meeting. Uh, given the allowing this three, five minutes uh windows for each applicant. Um, and uh I, I think that that's uh what I would prefer to do. Um, but we can certainly make that decision next week. Uh.
Yep.
Um.
And correct me if I'm wrong, because it's been a few years now. You would remember. Uh, didn't we give each candidate ten minutes or twelve for the interview process where we had an introduction of a minute or two, like three or four questions and then a wrap-up? So even if, to, to Mr. Branstadter's point then, even if we gave each ten minutes, it would only take a two-hour period of time, maybe a little bit more to interview all twelve and to give everyone a full ten minutes, which frankly, I thought last time it was a little too short, to be honest, to get a really good sense of folks. And we're going to pare down the questions, I think, by one or two, so a little bit me to give people more opportunity to give a more in-depth answer on the questions we've developed. So I don't see in, in response to your suggesting, it's a, a good one. And I don't think that maybe ten minutes per person would be excessive, but again, we can wait till next study session to chew on this, but I'll throw that out there. Does that sound like it might work? We can chew on it next time for sure, but I anticipate that we could easily do a two-hour meeting, maybe a little bit over, which is not unruly. Giving every candidate a ten-minute interview with three or four of the questions, plus a intro by the candidate and a conclusion by the candidate. And then following that, we would have an opportunity to have uh some discussion to window down the twelve to a process similar to what we did the last time.
Yeah, well, the last time we gave all of the, and there were something like seventeen or eighteen, uh, the chance to interview over two sessions. And that then uh then when the, all of us are availed of, of that opportunity to learn, then, then when we came to the the, you know, you know, we, we had an executive session of where we didn't make any decisions, but we uh highlighted impressions, okay, uh individually. Uh, and then we went into a, a, a very open process of where we, we've actually expressed um who we, who we, who we prioritize and, 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 and worked our way down to or three to two, to uh selection.
It was an Agatha Christie moment, and then, and then there were one. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, you know, and I, and I didn't, I, I, you know, I, I found that process to be very open.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I the, that uh, you know, you know, I, I thought we ended up choosing wisely. Uh, and uh, so, you know, you know, I'm, 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 I'm not looking for significant deviation from the, 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 the previous process, but I want to be fair to the candidates who um, who I don't personally have a record of interacting with, uh, to give them the opportunity to convince me.
Agreed. Uh, Deputy Mayor Moss, and then I'll ask Councilmember Bell her perspective.
I was just going to share that, uh, the tentative date's scheduled February seventh.
Mm-hmm.
It does not work for me.
The, the date for the selection process?
Right. It's scheduled for February, tentative is scheduled for February seventh.
Okay. We can certainly adjust that if need be. You bet. We've got our ninety days from December, so that would take us uh December, January, February, sometime in mid-March to finalize a decision. Correct, Ms. Schumacher?
Yeah, the date would be March twenty eighth.
Very good. Yeah, we can always work around you. Yeah, we did. We did for sure. Perspective, Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely agree with Councilmember Branstadter. I think that we need to avail the opportunity to everyone to get to know what they need to say. Um, a lot of stuff does not come through on a piece of paper, I mean, a ton. So I think it would be um in our best interest and in transparency and how we do everything here. So I would definitely say that we could narrow it down maybe to a few questions, maybe not, I think we had maybe five or six last time. And so maybe narrow it down a little bit more concise there, but that would be um, that would be my suggestion. But I think talking to them in person, hearing them, knowing their story, what they have to say is beneficial in getting to know who they are. So I agree with you.
What do you think about the ten-minute timeframe?
I think a ten-minute timeframe, I think that the closing should be a little bit longer because that's their kind of like free time to talk about anything that they would need to talk about. So I would encourage that in their closing, tell us what you want to say, because we'll be giving them questions that will be pretty specific. So we want to hear about them, why they're interested, why they're passionate about Lakewood, why they're passionate about being on city council. So I think it's good.
Well, very good. I think we've got some consensus on that. So as we wrap up the questions that we think will pose to the twelve candidates, you can help us identify the dates uh in which we're going to conduct these ten-minute per candidate interviews. Whether it needs to be a special session or study session, I presume it might have to be a special session since we're pretty booked on studying regular sessions. So I'm getting a nod from the, the manager on that. Okay, very good. Anything else, Ms. Schumacher, on that?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Uh, anything else, Mr. Coffield?
Mayor, um, on that same subject, would you like us to provide some dates for your consideration other than February seventh? Okay, we'll, we'll do that next week as well. Okay.
And given that we are going to do an interview process for each of the candidates, it's going to take some coordination as to who can be available. We may have to split it on two nights. That kind of a thing. Yeah.
Would you, would you like to split it on two nights?
Yeah, it's an hour each night, let's see.
Well, actually, you don't need an answer this evening. What we can do is we'll provide you some back-to-back meeting dates, so.
And let me think through, I know it's been, my brain is a little bit addled, but we did it all by Zoom last time, didn't we? Wasn't it by Zoom? No?
It was.
It was.
No, last time it was by Zoom.
By Zoom.
Yes.
And I think we wanted to try to do it in person this time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I would think we could do it over two nights. Now it gives us a max of an hour and a half a night between the time we review and discuss, but this should be back-to-back. Unless you wanted it all in a night, that's fine, too. Mr. Branstadter? I'm just trying to get the convenience of the applicants.
One of the advantages, Mayor, of having two nights is that then when staff goes out to the candidates to schedule them, that uh we don't end up losing someone because they just can't make one of, the one day that we chose. Um, and we provided a little bit of flex, flexibility. Um, you know, uh, even last time, I think the, the scheduling caused us to lose, to drop one. You know, even last time, I think the, the scheduling caused us to lose, to drop one applicant last time because of, of that. But so, 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 so two is better and we don't have to be so prescriptive in terms of we can make sure that they all have the choice and it can be given. Think, well, which ones can you make? And if you can make them both, that's fine, but there's one you can't make. We, we, we have availability to work around it. Just assuming that none of them is gonna be going to South Dakota or something, you know. Maybe gone for a week.
So for our study session, then, if you would first look at a few dates and then we'll clear it with the seven of us first, make sure we can attend. And then we'll select those two and then get them out for the candidates to sign up for the ones that work for them.
Affirmative.
Got it, okay. Anything else?
A few updates if I could. First off, I just want to recognize Recreation Coordinator Sally Martinez and, and her, and her team for Saturday's New Year, New You Community Walk and the festivities and everything that occurred down at Fort Silicon Park on, on Saturday morning and into the, into the afternoon. It was a great event, it was very well attended. Also want to thank the Clover Park School District for their coordination and leadership and helping pull this off. They, they were able to provide and help reach out to sixty or seventy new families who have moved into the community in, in, in recent months, and a number of them did come out and it was a great way to, great way, great way to learn about Lakewood down at Fort Silicon Park. This is something that we're gonna try and do on a quarterly basis, just kind of, we'll see how it goes. But overall, it was a great, great success. And again, I just want to recognize my staff for, for a great job in the school, in, in the school district. A key legislative priority for the council on the federal front is to apply for a RACE grant, which is part of the recent infrastructure bill that, 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 that Congress passed. And our, our goal, our initial goal and objective was to apply for a construction grant to build the Green Street Loop as part of our downtown subarea plan. As we have gone through that process, and by the way, we're on a very tight timeline, the application has to be in by February twenty eighth. In previous years, it was like midsummer, so that we're in a, we're, we're in a bit of a
With a grant?
We're in a bit of a crunch, that's correct. But what we learned going through the process is that the level, the level of, 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 of design and scope that we have for that project, we are not in a position to be able to apply for a construction grant. So what we would like to do is pivot a little bit and actually still apply for a RACE grant, rather apply for a planning grant, so then we can do the work to get it to the level where it would then effectively compete for a construction grant. So that's kind of the direction that, that, that we're going, because if we do apply for a construction grant, I'm afraid we would fail and we would fail miserably. Because again, the downtown subarea plan is a very, very conceptual and the, the requirements, the NOFA that came out is, is very, very specific in terms of what they're looking for. So I just wanted to advise council on that.
That might play in well, given our timing, because there's lots of stuff, as you know, going on in the town center that if well planned for, might qualify as even better for a construction.
And that's exactly, that we were thinking the exact same thing last week, Mayor.
That's correct, yeah. Okay. Mr. Boki, real quick.
So are you talking like thirty percent design or something?
Actually, that's, that's, that's correct to get
Like the road?
Yeah, that's exactly right, to get the thirty percent design, that's correct. And, and by the way, the size of the grant that we would be seeking could be anywhere from a quarter of a million to a million dollars. So we're gonna scope it out and, 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 and see where we are here, so. And just real quick, from a calendaring standpoint, a week from this Friday or two weeks from last Friday is a couple of things going on. One is that there's an Affordable Housing Forum, and I know, I think a couple of you are signed up to go to that and our planning and strategic, our strategic planning manager Tiffany Spear is actually gonna be one of the, on one of the panels testifying about that and sharing everything that the city of Lakewood does as it relates to housing. Also, at ten thirty that morning is the Chief Flesh Eye Memorial Walk. And so, once we have more information about that, we'll, we'll be sharing that with you. Also, that Thursday and Friday, the twenty sixth and the twenty seventh, if you have an interest, Pierce County will be undertaking their homeless point in time or pit count. And then February first, I know at least the mayor and the deputy mayor and myself are, and, 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 and a couple other folks will be meeting with our, our, our state legislators and we'll be traveling down to Olympia. And certainly other council members are invited and encouraged to, if you can, based on your, on your schedules, to attend those meetings as well, to talk about what's, 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 what's going on. And then just also wanted to point out, you know, our police chief is gonna be retiring. And I know the council is gonna be presenting him with a proclamation at your regular meeting on February sixth. And in, in advance of that, between six and seven, right out here in the council chambers, we were thinking about just having a public recognition event for people to come by and just say goodbye to Mike and, you know, things, things along those lines. And that'll be, again, that'll be right before your council meeting, so kind of lead into your proclamation, if you will. Also, just real quick on the, on the legislative front, so as you know, the long session has, has kicked off. We're well into week two. On issues specific to us, you know, our, our capital budget request in partnership with the Nusqually Tribe down at Fort Silicon Park is moving forward. Representative Mari Levitt has committed to be in the primary sponsor for this, so that's great. Another one is, is LASSO, we had your, it's, we had committed to applying for five hundred thousand dollars. Originally, we thought they were still in the twenty ninth district, but we actually had to get down and actually look at where the new lines are, and they are just in the twenty eighth district. So this will have to be a twenty eighth district ask as well. And I know Mayor, as part of council comments, you're gonna talk a little bit more about that. But one of the things our legislators are looking for is, you know, what's the city's financial commitment to this? Because as part of your policy, I know you had, you know, received a funding request to use some city ARPA funds there. On the public safety side, there have been some bills introduced that deal with vehicular pursuits. And so those are moving, moving forward. Also, the Blake decision, there's a bill that's been introduced that would actually return back certain substances to be in a Class C felony. So things along those lines. And then, you know, the good news is our request for funding and support of the community partnership program down at Western State is in the governor's budget, and that seems to be supported as we move along. And there's a lot of other things that are, that are happening down there. On the SSMCP front, I just want to point out that one of their key priorities is occupational licensing for, you know, the spouses of our military's families when they come here to JBLM. And there was three public hearings in the last week and a half focused on audiology and speech pathology compact and mental health counseling compact. And so, and, and actually Representative Mari Levitt was a key sponsor for all three of those. So that was some, some, some good news. And our own Maria Tobin was down there testifying with a number of other folks. And so just wanted to kind of point out, but it's moving forward. And AWC will be having their legislative advocacy meetings on the fifteenth and the sixteenth. And if you're interested in attending those, let us know and we'll get you, we'll get you signed up. So with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Boki, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions. First of all, the Olympia trip, are you planning to do that in the morning? Because I might be able to make it if we, I, I think originally you talked about morning and you were gonna finish around.
You're talking about the February first, Councilmember Boki? So the short answer is yes, we haven't, we haven't nailed down the, the appointments. But, but that's our goal, is to try and get them scheduled in the morning into the early afternoon, because there'll be at least six of them.
Okay, well, I'll stay in touch with you on that, because I might be able to make it if it's morning, I think I have an appointment.
And you, and you know, and if you can't make them all, that's fine, if you can make some of them, that would be great as well.
So the next question has to do within your comments that you sent to us. They're talking about the UW, University of Washington, I believe Tacoma Capstone Project for Urban Forestry. That's been a big issue, that was part of our commitment that we made when we changed the, the, the tree ordinance, the tree retention plan or ordinance. Where do you see that going? Where, where, is there gonna be an action? Do you think that the, these students will produce an actionable item for us? Or at least something that would eventually can make it into some kind of ordinance? Or, I mean, where, where do you think you're gonna?
Yeah, actually, the ultimate goal is to bring forward a proposed program for this body to implement, either beginning in, you know, later in twenty-three, but perhaps, you know, two thousand twenty-four. And our expectation is to bring that forward to you about the May or June timeline. And also, they'll be working hand in hand with our staff in the Community and Economic Development Department on this. I will tell you that I have had a chance to see the background of, of these students. And I would just say they're very, very impressive and they bring to the table a wide range of disciplines. So just like the, the similar group of students that, that did the climate change work for us, I think these group of students will, will serve us just as well, if not better.
Okay, thank you very much, John. Mr. Branstadter?
Yes, Mr. Caulfield, in your comments, email comments to us about economic development, there were a couple of potential developments in the town center, both in the area behind the, the target and as well as the relocation of the House of Donuts and assembling a, a piece of property there. And that kind of circles around towards what kind of a timeline for review of do we want to continue, do we want to make any changes to the transportation impact fee codes for, particularly for, for some of those, those developments in a, in a window that will help encourage these to happen? Do we have any sort of timeline for, for, for reviewing that, that fee code, the elements to it? Or is that tied to the comprehensive plan review?
Yes, Councilmember Branstadter, it's tied to your two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan update. So it's, it's included as a part of that. As far as these projects, what their timelines are, these are all just very conceptual, they're brand new. It could be two, three, four, five years before they happen.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Very good, well, thank you for that, Mr. Caulfield. So now we'll turn to city council comments. We will have an executive session following this series of city council comments briefly tonight. Mr. Boki will start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Saturday event was great, the weather helped, of course, but it was really great planning. And I did meet some people who, who are newly moved to the area from a, a long ways away, and it was really interesting, kind of family brought them, but they found that the, the affordable housing and they could afford the, the home they wanted here in Lakewood. So it was, it was great to talk to them. The school district had a great turnout of, of employees and really helped, I think, bring, bring families in. And I just, I just thought it was a really nice event. I have planning commission Wednesday night, that's tomorrow night here, and I think they're gonna continue their discussions on the comp plan. And PCRC, I believe, is Thursday night, but it's a pretty light agenda. It's not, it's a long agenda, but I, it's, it's, I don't believe that there's any actionable items. So I'll probably just participate in, by Zoom. And I'm not sure if my ad hoc PCRC Transportation Committee is tomorrow. So I'm gonna have to try to figure that out, because I, I looked at the computer in the last couple of days and I haven't found any updates or anything. So I'm gonna have to dig around, but if that is, it'll be tomorrow afternoon. And that is continuing, and I really have nothing new to report on that. We're just working our way through the scoring process and comparing it to what other counties do. But, you know, right now, we have nothing to report. I think the idea is that by March or April, we'll have some actionable item. We'll, we'll see where that goes. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bell?
Thank you. I would love seeing everything online, on social about the New Year, New You. I was unable to make the event because of previous engagement, but I will be there for the meditation on Saturday. I have signed up for that, so love all of that. I think it's just amazing what, what staff is doing and how this is pulled off. And everyone just seems to love it, everything I've heard in the community, that they really appreciate these events. And then I just wanted to congratulate everybody who was not only sworn in, but got the special accommodations tonight. And I did go on a ride along with an officer who received two of them. So Officer Pyon, so he was amazing and just everything that you could think of with that ride along. And I just thought it was great, and I actually look forward to going on another one soon. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Councilmember Branstadter.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I was glad to learn today that the Telecom Woodbrook Neighborhood Association has finally made the decisions to reconstitute themselves, to meet, meet monthly and regularly. Not excited that they're choosing to meet on a Monday night each month, but that's, that's it, it, it's, it's good that, that we're sort of gonna get going with that goal to get that group back up and be, be active, to be able to go and do that. That I did appreciate the fact that we did do with some ceremony recognizing police officers today. That, you know, while that, that, while, while I felt good that we were doing that, I think that it's, you know, we are in a window where our physical support, in your words, Mayor, resonate with officers and potential officers in the community. And I, I noted that we're not exactly the norm as a community in our relationship with police officers and, 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 and the value of them. University Place, for example, still contracts for their police services with the Sheriff's Department. And when they ask their citizens to approve a ballot measure to enhance that, that presence, they gotta know. So, you, you know, it's something that, that, that it would, not fathomable to me would, would be in Lakewood, but it's also not fathomable that we wouldn't prioritize robustly resourcing the police department to the point of where we'd have to go to that. Sort, sort of a desire to be able to go and do that. That, and to get a chance to walk on Saturday, that and that, that weather that day came out of nowhere. So, you know, it was good that they were able to do that. And the, the young ladies who are daffodil princesses, had a chance to talk with them a bit before the meeting today. You know, all, someone that will represent our, our community and, and their school as well.
For sure, yeah. Great, thank you all, certainly echo those comments on the daffodil princesses. The interview process was not only fun, but it was incredibly informative, I know you found that too. Great, great young women, for sure. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too enjoyed the, the walk on Saturday, and I met some people that was attending the new base, the schools on base. It was really interesting, there was two young men, they were like elementary school, and they were really interested in what the city does and what the, you a big person, because mother introduced me as the deputy mayor, and they thought that was the greatest thing ever was. And they just had all kind of questions, I enjoyed talking to them. And they go, and they wanted to take a picture with me, and it was just, it just shows how interested and attentive our youth are today and that they are paying attention. So I think we need to, to reach out to them when, when possible, not make any efforts that otherwise. But when possible, just take a moment to just say special thanks to them, they love it. So that was good, I enjoyed that. And I appreciate the ceremonies tonight. And I really congratulate all of the award winners and welcome them all aboard. So let's see, that was all I have.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you all for your attention tonight. I thought it was a, a great night with a lot of good community support for lots of good things that are going on, whether it's volunteers. whether it's volunteers doing things for youth at the Oakbrook Women Tennis Club. Certainly our police officers being commissioned and those receiving commendations. It's a fine signal, I think, to the community that there is good policing being done in Lakewood. I mean, out of the, remember the thousands of calls for services a city like ours gets annually. Unfortunately, we hear about the minute, small actions where there may be use of force. You don't hear about the thousands of other calls for service that result in a positive interaction with the public. And I was sincere in my comments that our police officers, for the most part, are really the face of the city. To many residents, they don't necessarily know or see us. They don't necessarily know or see executive staff, but they do see if they're pulled over, if they have a property loss, if they suffer some other malady. They often see a member of our police department. And so I applaud them for their their fine work. The walk on Saturday was well done, well attended, I thought. And kudos goes to our Parks Department personnel for putting that on. I told Sally that, you know, while she put a ton of effort into it, I think people like just having the opportunity to be together. We don't necessarily have to put as much effort as we perhaps do just an invitation and be present. So I told her, kudos, great job, but you don't have to work so hard next time. People just love coming together and this is an opportunity to do it. So once a quarter might be a great thing. And she she concurred. Things coming up. So we've got a few trips coming up. We talked a little bit about the Sister City delegation that came from Gimhe, Korea. And they have invited us to attend their own celebration, which is probably an even bigger deal in Gimhe. I believe it's the five through seven May weekend timeframe. Four through seven, four through seven weekend. I I I plan to go if it's okay with the group. And I think we can take one, maybe two council members, Mr. Caulfield. So there is some budget allowance for that. I believe the deputy mayor has expressed some interest in going. If there's another one of you who would like to go, I think, Mr. Brandstetter, you went one time. You thought it was informative and educational. Okay, very good. So Mr. Boke is expressing some interest this time. It doesn't leave you out for the next time. But and I think Mr. Anderson has gone, or at least has been to a similar celebration in years past. So that might be the delegation, Mr. Caulfield, then, between the myself, deputy mayor, and councilmember Boke. While the city would cover your expenses, if you bring a spouse, it's going to be on your dime. So just just to know that on that. Similarly, we are reinvigorating our annual soljourns to Washington DC, where we do good work with our federal delegation with Jake Johnston. I plan to go with the city manager. And I believe the deputy mayor will accompany us this time for that one. And that's going to be in March or March, I believe. So more to follow on that. If that's something of interest for the next trip, it is not unusual that we do two trips to DC in a given year. So there will be an opportunity for rotating participation on that as well. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's correct. And then finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about one of the comments made by the city manager with regard to the loss of project in the 28th. As you know, they made an ask of ARPA funds for us. We, at the time, kind of declined on the initial review. Not to say that we can't bring them back for maybe a conditional review or a conditional approval in whole or in part, similar to what we did with the Pierce County Village. The reason why I bring this up is it has been made fairly clear to me that if we're making an ask by our state legislative representatives in the 28th now, that the likely question is, what are you doing for yourself in terms of support city of Lakewood? So before we go hat in hand to our state for a grant, I suggest we reconsider what we want to do in our own backyard for Lhasa. So that can be something that comes up in the next study session. For our part, based on the concerns raised and the leadership change that is occurring. We all know that Jan Hutchins is going to retire. I've asked the city manager to coordinate a meeting with myself and the board chair of Lhasa, along with Ms. Hutchins, if she's still in in place as the executive director, just to kind of discuss the concerns from the Washington Housing Trust Fund, the plans on the design and anticipated construction costs for the units, which are certainly a concern to all of us, and just get a better sense on where they're going with this project so that we can come back and feel more comfortable in making an appropriate allocation. If that's that's the desire of council, the consensus. So probably in a study session to follow after we have our meeting with the board chair. So more to follow. But don't be surprised if we go down to the Legislative City Day and Representative Levitt or Bernoski asks us the question. So we need to be prepared with an answer. Yep.
In in preparation for that, because I wouldn't want anybody to go down there and not have a full council discussion. So we might have to have it next week. But I guess I need, just so we understand, I need to understand that them not securing the financing, how that's impacted the timing of this project.
Absolutely.
Because we, ours is ARPA money. So it needs to be what committed by the end of 2024.
And extended by 2026.
2026.
Yeah.
And so you know, if it's still a, if they have now been knocked back to the concept stage, you know, that's a pretty difficult call for us.
Great question.
I mean, we're supportive and we've been supportive and we've helped purchase that land. So we're in, right? I mean, I think we've we've committed more than than anybody else has to that to this point. But is it, is it? Where did this end up? I guess the uncertainty of the situation surrounding it is what.
And we hope to find clarity to that exact question because we, I think we all have questions about.
Because here's, I guess, here's my point real quickly. One crack at the apple is is what I would say. If they want us to commit to push for federal monies this year and state monies this year and our monies this year, that this is it. I mean, if they don't come through in the biennium, then we've got other things that we need to go ask for. We're not going to make it every two years to go down a budget to to talk about Lhasa. I mean, so is it this biennium or do they want to go two years from now? That would be my question. But then then we have this situation of we got to do something besides ARPA money. But then I would think.
Right, if we have the resources by then. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you know, I do think that there's also, you know, another avenue to discuss with their board chair to be able to go through in that, you know, they had laid out a robust, essentially a three-phase plan to use the land that they've been been able to to acquire. But that a the question is, is that how much funding do they need before they can at least do a scaled down phase one, which would be, you know, a smaller number of units or some of the other amenities? But that would still be able to be built upon. That they can be built within the window that our funds need to be used if full funding for phase one can't be acquired in this in this biennium. So, you know, that that's the other way to look at it, to make sure that our money can be used wisely. But that there is, but that the long-term plan is still there, that that's going to require other things. But I think, because I think that the money that's available now is primarily ours and the county's. And and so.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So that so that it may just be a question of what's the scale that can be done by 2025 at some time.
No, good point. Good questions. Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for your comments. With that, we will recess into executive session in which we will take no action. We will be reviewing potential litigation, which the city is or may be a party. Again, under applicable state law, no action will be taken at the end of the executive session, which will last approximately 10 minutes. We will adjourn. So we are now in recess to executive session. So we are now in recess to executive session.